Good morning and welcome to the May 16th, 2019 Business Meeting. And with that, I'd like the County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes, Commissioners, first staff support today, County Council Andrew Naylor, Clerk to the Board Mary Rathke, Commissioners, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Housing Authority Commissioner Reynolds.
You.
Chair Bernard.
You threw me off on that here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first off, I'm going to announce that the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And with that, I'd like to introduce Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come today.
You're welcome.
And Gary, what do we, oh, I guess at this point, we ask the Clerk Theresa Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Of course. Housing Authority Consent Agenda, under, or I'm sorry, approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Health Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority and Home Forward for Case Management for Families Living in Public Housing, approval of a service contract between the Housing Authority and Mental Health Association of Oregon for peer support services for families living in housing, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority and Social Services for Case Management for Housing Our Families Program. That concludes today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Do any Commissioners want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll consider a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
I apologize. Normally, I try to be prepared, but with all the budget stuff and coming out of the J-PAC meeting this morning and all the review, I was not able to do that. So I do have a question, maybe Jill can answer. Again, my apologies for not being as prepared as I would prefer. Jill, just item one and two.
Yes.
The agreement between the Housing Authority and Health and Human Services, could you just give me the nature of those two agreements?
Item one is actually authorizing Health Housing and Human Services to transfer money over to the Housing Authority from the Affordable Housing and Services Fund, the PLP money that was authorized by the Board so that we can then use that money to enter into these contracts to serve the Housing Authority. It's just a transfer of those funds.
Okay. So that PLP, the policy level proposal we approved, so was that embedded in those monies and there was expenditures embedded in the Housing Authority's budget?
It will be when we bring it before you, yes.
Okay.
Those few contracts that are tied to the Housing Authority, not the whole, not the contract in whole, the individual ones that will be serving public housing residents.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries unanimously. You know, we ought to get you a face, do you have a smartphone?
No, I don't.
We get you one to loan, you can put your face up on the big screen and call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I'll announce that the Board will now adjourn as the Housing Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And with that, I have a number of cards for citizen communication. First, Melissa Earlbaum, Tom, is it Seema or I? I didn't hear that.
Soma.
Soma. One must go, okay, you two come up. Thank you for coming today.
Sure. Go ahead and start.
Go for it.
All right. My name is Melissa Earlbaum. I'm the Executive Director for Clackamas Women's Services. Chair Bernard and fellow county commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. I am joined today by a coalition of nonprofits providing core safety net services for Clackamas County. As you will hear from my colleagues, we are a coalition that represents services for the most vulnerable citizens. We are here today to share our experience as nonprofit providers offering core safety net services directly aligned with the county's stated values and strategic goals. We are very grateful for the support we've received from the county through funding, joint initiatives, and partnership. We aspire to engage with the county on a deeper level to address the challenges faced by our most vulnerable citizens. Collectively, our agencies work together to bring services directly into the community. Nonprofit providers are uniquely positioned to do so, and this is of great importance, particularly in communities that face barriers to accessing services or who have fears or discomfort engaging with government. Nonprofit agencies are also nimble and able to quickly respond to emerging needs, and many of our agencies in our coalition provide 24/7 support. As nonprofit agencies, we also provide meaningful employment opportunities for our citizens. Not only does our coalition serve the most vulnerable citizens, we also provide a range of prevention services specifically designed to create social change through local community engagement. According to the CDC, the state of Oregon has one of the highest rates of intimate partner violence in the nation. The Institute for Women's Policy Research found that healthcare costs for those experiencing abuse are 42% higher than those who do not. Victims report working 10% fewer hours annually, and the lifetime loss of income due to violence is about $52,000 by 2017 standards. According to the Teen Health Survey conducted by Oregon Health Authority, 13% of Clackamas County eighth graders identified as having given in to sexual activity they did not want to because of pressure or force. This is higher than the state average. CWS serves individuals and families who experience domestic and sexual violence, elder abuse, vulnerable adult abuse, stalking, and trafficking. CWS has a 24-hour crisis line and emergency shelter, a well-established housing program, services designed for children and youth, a counseling program, outstationed positions in the DHS office, a Latina services and promotoras program, and we're in 22 schools throughout the county. In addition, we have a community-based program located at A-Safe Place Family Justice Center where we provide 75% of the services delivered. There has been about a 26% increase in the number of people walking into the Family Justice Center from previous years. As public awareness continues to evolve and we continue our successful community outreach efforts, our services are significantly increased every year. Clackamas County General Funds account for about 6% of our $3.8 million budget, and state and federal funding passed through various divisions of H3S account for about 10% of our budget. The remainder of our funding comes from private fundraising efforts, managing direct state and federal contracts, and a small portion from insurance reimbursements for counseling. So we're here today to provide testimony from the various safety net nonprofits. Thank you for your support. And lastly, our coalition includes additional partners that wanted to be mentioned such as Northwest Housing Alternative and Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine that could not be here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Simon.
Good morning. I want to echo Melissa's gratitude for the opportunity to speak with you today. A critical, oh, I'm Tom Soma, representing Children's Center. A critical measure of society is how we care for our most vulnerable. In Clackamas County, are we doing everything we can to make sure kids and families are safe and thriving? A report of child abuse is made every 10 seconds in the United States, making it one of the most prevalent health and safety risks facing children today. The Oregon Department of Human Services approximates that as many as 2,000 Clackamas County children are suspected victims of abuse or neglect each year. By all estimates, this number is well below the total number of Clackamas County children who have experienced or are at risk of abuse, neglect, or exposure to domestic violence. There is no question that the public safety of our children should be a top priority. Public investment in the programs and services necessary to keep children safe and help them overcome threats to their well-being has historically lagged far behind the need. This has placed the burden on the backs of agencies, primarily nonprofit organizations who are on the ground working to keep children safe from harm and help them heal from trauma. Caregiver maltreatment, household violence, and predatory abuse top a long list of risks facing children in Clackamas County. The extreme trauma generated by these experiences has a severe and lasting impact on the future well-being and stability of our youngest victims. As a social determinant of health, trauma caused by maltreatment can literally alter the path of a child's future physical, emotional, and intellectual development. Negative outcomes associated with adverse childhood experiences, commonly called ACES, include some of society's most prolific and challenging health issues, including alcoholism, drug abuse, depression, suicide, poor physical health, and obesity. Lower educational attainment, unemployment, and poverty have also been linked to ACES. All of this has a downstream effect that increases the need for public programs and financial assistance. It is estimated that the lifetime cost for one untreated victim of violence is $212,000. For the 2,000 Clackamas County children suspected to have experienced abuse or neglect in any given year, this equates to a lifetime price tag of over $400 million. Multiply this year over year, and the numbers are beyond staggering. Since its inception 17 years ago, Children's Center was envisioned as a public-private partnership. This collaboration was premised on an understanding that centralized assessment services in Clackamas County would require balanced funding from a variety of sources. Anchored by the county as a primary vested partner, the projected model was to include state and federal government sources, insurance providers, and philanthropic donors. Unfortunately, the proposed funding structure has never been fully realized and has reached the point where fundraising income and insurance reimbursements now cover more than 65% of our costs. And while we've risen to the challenge, the writing's on the wall. This model is unsustainable. The long-term viability and high quality of child abuse intervention services in Clackamas County is only possible with the collaboration of key partners and support of the entire community. While we recognize that the demand for public resources is high, the county's financial commitment has not kept pace with the volume of services. Clackamas County's government and citizens must make a greater commitment to the safety and well-being of our children. The five of us before you today are part of an emerging nonprofit safety net coalition. We urge you to perceive us as collaborators, not competitors. Together, we're tackling the county's most serious challenges and serving its most vulnerable citizens. And we're here before you because our very existence is threatened on many fronts, not the least of which is a lack of county investment in our collective efforts. As you wrestle with the county's fiscal challenges and constraints, we're now contending with federal tax reform that has effectively disincentivized 90% of the donors whose generosity is our major funding source. That headwind is as strong as any I've faced in my 40-year career. Now more than ever, we need Clackamas County leaders to join us by elevating your financial commitment to the most vulnerable members of our community. Every child in Clackamas County deserves to be safe, valued, and heard. Every family deserves the opportunity to thrive when the will exists the way is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Christian and Simon Fulford.
Is that my guest's name?
Yeah.
Chair Bernard, fellow county commissioners, together with my colleagues, I am here from CASA of Clackamas County to speak to you today on behalf of the children and families we serve collectively. Working in coalition, we provide the nonprofit safety net services our county's most vulnerable citizens depend upon. A CASA, court-appointed special advocate, is a community volunteer who attends 37 and a half hours of training and is sworn in by a judge as a legal party to a case of a child who has been removed from their home due to abuse or neglect and is in the foster care system. One little known fact, it is mandated by both state and federal statute that a CASA be appointed to the case of every child who enters foster care. However, the state provides less than 15% of the funding necessary to ensure that every child in care have a CASA, and the county provides less than 0.007% of our overall funding. At CASA of Clackamas County, we are appointed to the case of every single child that comes into foster care in the county. Today, there are over 350 children from 244 families in foster care. Currently, we have 124 CASA volunteers serving 168 of those children from 123 families. Children who enter foster care belong to a population that is perhaps one of the most marginalized, at-risk populations there is, minors who have experienced trauma and lack of functional parent or effective family safety net. The Center for Disease Control found that children on average enter the foster care system with an adverse childhood experience or ACE score of 5.2 out of a possible 10. A score of four or greater has been linked to serious adverse long-term mental and physical health outcomes, including diabetes, some cancers, and both perpetrating violence and being a victim of violent crime. CASA is a catalytic solution. It sits at the nexus of child welfare involvement and community engagement in a way nothing else does. CASA leverages community resources in the form of volunteers and the hours they devote to develop stable and consistent relationships with children during the most chaotic period of their young lives. And their advocacy on children's behalf is effective. Extensive national studies show children paired with a CASA tend to receive more needed services, do better in school and in key mental health markers, are less likely to re-enter foster care, and tend to move through the system an average of five months more quickly than children without a CASA volunteer. At a cost to the state of $28,000 a year for a child to be in foster care, you can see that the savings add up quickly when children have CASAs. Last fiscal year, 132 volunteers spent 14,491 hours advocating on behalf of over 300 children in foster care. Independent sector values a volunteer hour at $25.43, meaning we were the recipient of the equivalent of $368,506 from our volunteers. With a small staff of 10 and a budget under $700,000, that is significant impact. As you consider where to invest the county's resources, please know that I and my colleagues are committed to partnering with you to leverage the county's investments to efficiently and effectively meet the needs of an ever-growing population of vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll see you Saturday night.
Sure will.
For the record, I'm Simon Fulford. I'm the Executive Director of Parrot Creek Child and Family Services. Chair Bernard, fellow county commissioners, as my colleagues have said before me, we are here to speak to you collectively as a demonstration of the strength and support that we offer each other, not only as organizations, but much more importantly, in the continuum of services we provide to some of the county's most vulnerable children and families. Each of us understands that our work with a child or an adult is often only as good as a service that preceded it, or the intervention can only be successful with an appropriate referral that we can hand them on to. We also know that the life journeys of our participants are complicated and far from linear. A supposed failure at Parrot Creek can be the stepping stone to success at Northwest Family Services, or a victim of trauma and abuse helped by the Clackamas Children's Center may finally find their voice in one of our programs. Collectively, we provide some of the highest quality and most impactful programs here in the county. We are the safety net that catches children and families in acute need who often fall between the cracks of traditional systems. We are an essential part of the array of services that each and every community needs, wants, and deserves. In true and mutually respectful collaboration with state and county services, we can be fleet of foot, we can be nimble, we can respond 24/7, and are often able to break down the barriers to engagement that many children and families face. We reach diverse and often hidden populations, we strive to put equity at the heart of our service models, and I think we are more successful at that than we give ourselves credit for. You know Parrot Creek's story, that 50 years ago, the citizens of Clackamas County approved and made a decision to invest in a community asset for some of our most vulnerable members, children and families in the juvenile and child welfare systems. You know that what was first just a farmhouse and a ranch program has grown into a diverse array of programs and services, and that we support over 800 children and families here in Clackamas County every year, not only enriching their lives but saving the taxpayers often thousands if not millions of dollars. I could not say it better than Melissa did in her opening statements. We are grateful for the support we have received from the county through funding, joint initiatives, and partnership. We aspire to engage with you on a deeper level and to address the challenges faced by our most vulnerable populations. We feel that we could be doing so much more for you, and as you make your decisions on how to wisely spend our fellow citizens' hard-earned money, you could be unleashing our potential to a far greater degree than you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Zodro and Chris Hayes.
Hawes.
Hawes. Actually, Chris, can you wait a second? I'm gonna get Sherri Hall up here after this group, so after this one. Go ahead.
Good morning. Chairman Bernard and fellow commissioners, I'm here today representing Rose Fuller, who is the Executive Director of Northwest Family Services, and our clients we serve and the staff that serve our clients so well. I am the fairly new Deputy Director at Northwest Family Services, and the words that follow are a combination of the messages that we, Rose and I, want you to receive. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about our collective partnership and want you to know that we are striving to build efficiency and effectiveness through this new collaborative safety net coalition. Today, we represent the Clackamas County nonprofit community as we represent the Clackamas County nonprofit community, know that we are serving tens of thousands of the most vulnerable people who live here. My esteemed colleagues today, in their testimonies presented convincing data of the needs, the opportunities, and the successes that come when we provide critical services collaboratively to our community constituents. Northwest Family Services, as you might already know, is a multi-service, multicultural agency that provides a range of prevention and early intervention services. While Northwest Family Services was established in 1983, we officially moved our main office to Clackamas 10 years ago, and although we've been serving the tri-county area, we began to serve Clackamas County in a more intensive effort over the last decade. We believe that a strong community is built on strong families and individuals, and as with other agencies, we draw strength from volunteer support and are funded in multiple ways. With that said, there's never enough funds to serve those in need and to support our staff. Northwest is in particular serving a large number of immigrants and refugees currently, especially those from south of the border, who live and work in this community, some short-term and some very long-term. This has to do with the diversity of our staff and our mission, that most of our services are provided in both Spanish and in English, and sometimes in other languages as needed. We also provide translation services. We partner with hundreds of organizations and our staff incorporate a community-based, grassroots approach that engenders trust. Too many people, even in this robust economy, are one flat tire away from being homeless or helpless. Virtually all of our services are community-based. We work to support families when appropriate with parenting, behavioral health, living wage employment support, early childhood, and navigation through complex services and systems. Students receive early alcohol and drug prevention services in our schools here in Clackamas County. Our staff are represented in 17 middle and high school campuses, offering a wide range of support for youth, family, and staff. I would like to illustrate two of our programs briefly today. CASA Esperanza, Latina Women's and Children's Shelter. We're very proud of this new effort. In 2018, Northwest Family Services was recruited by what was known then as the Clackamas County Children, Youth, and Family Division to operate the CASA Esperanza, previously known as CASA Hoga, as a culturally-specific Latino/Latina domestic violence shelter. Culturally-specific services, as you might know, are largely unavailable in Clackamas County and the surrounding counties. Also, unique challenges exist in finding safe temporary housing for Spanish-language women with limited or no English language skills. Unfortunately, frequently, these families often couch surf or end up returning back to their abusive homes. CASA Esperanza, known as the House of Hope, is a temporary shelter meant to provide stability, a safety plan, care coordination, housing, eventual employment, and other support to low-income Latina women and their children who are fleeing a domestic violence situation and have no other means of support. We're often the last resort for these families. The goal is to provide the women to be self-sufficient so that they can live and work independently and free from fear and harm. It is the only culturally-specific, exclusively specific shelter in Oregon. As this historically underserved population, Latinas and their children affected by domestic violence will be offered multiple services during their stay at CASA Esperanza.
Are you getting close?
I'm sorry.
Are you getting close to being done? We're about two minutes over.
Yes. All right, I'm gonna skip to my conclusion. Collectively, we appreciate the support of the Clackamas County, as has been provided in the past, and we look forward to continued support in the future. Together, Clackamas County and our nonprofit coalition can build a strong and vibrant community, both with its natural beauty, its economy, and also the diversity of its people. We look forward to speaking to you collectively from time to time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Paul.
I just want to just say that we know each of you and your organizations. We've visited your facilities, and it's come to light here in my last couple, three years as far as the gravity, trying to understand the gravity of the situation we're facing as a number of people are falling into homelessness or a number of dire situations, the cost of living, it puts that much more stress on families, and stress can lead to a lot of things not so positive. Also realizing how, learning more about our, how we fund systems, you know, transportation is what I do a lot of, but today, it's really about Health and Human Services and all those needs, and how siloed we are at the state level, at the federal level to some degree, but state and also locally. And you all have filled in the gaps between those silos and what services are needed, and it's unfortunate. And to be as positive as possible, I do know that sometimes these grants really create silos in themselves by measuring up to the constraints of the grants that we get, and it's fantastic that we have such a great amount of volunteers and philanthropists to volunteer or provide revenue to do the great work that you do that we currently can't provide. So all to say that I think we need a greater conversation and work towards how do we talk about our public safety system, and you're part of that, and the provision of those services, and that goes all the way from the courts to our law enforcement, to everything that we do. We gotta figure out a way to break down some of those silos and figure out a way to fund those adequately so that we're getting that attention. those adequately so that we're getting that attention to those people in need. After all, you know, at least I'm here, I'm sure my colleagues are as well, concerned about, not us and not our generation, even though people in our generation are struggling, but the future generations, that's what's really important. So I really appreciate you all coming here today and sharing, and we'll do the best that we can as we tread into our budget season here and keep you all in mind.
Martha.
Yeah, thank you all for coming today. As you know, I've always supported all of your organizations. I was here when Michelle Everly, before we have our new director now, actually, you're not new, but I remember the old days, Melissa. Michelle Everly was a dear friend of mine, and I remember working with her very closely because at the time, the organization was not getting enough funding from the state, and we worked very hard to do a pushback with that. And also, my daughter, as many of you know, is a prosecutor in Middlesex County in Massachusetts, who does all the domestic violence and rape cases in that area, and I talk to her frequently because, as you know, it's a very stressful job. I remember the Children's Center was hatched with Scott Palmer, Rena Adamex, myself, and Diane Westrak, and the halls of Providence Hospital here in Oregon City, and it was actually a very tough ask at the time, because at that time, no one was actually wanting to confront the realities of child abuse and the brutality of that. And I knew Susan Patterson, who was the first Executive Director extremely well, and as you know, it was housed at Providence Hospital, they gave a building, and now it has its own building, so everything's grown with that. So I've also had a long history with, oh, with the folks, you know, for the young men here that we have with our facilities, the campus, and we need to take a look at them, Parrot Creek, Northwest Family Alternatives, and Casa. I had close friends who have worked consistently with Casa. So I'm gonna make a suggestion that you actually even expand your network from five. There are two groups that, actually, three groups that pop into my head, that would be the children of incarcerated parents. There's also a group that has approached us for funding this year, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, that actually is the workforce component for people who are slipping into poverty and getting them skilled up so they can have jobs and potentially move themselves away from dysfunction. And I strongly suggest, given the dollars that are going to be flowing into our school systems, because of the recent work at the legislature, that you expand your collaborative to our superintendents and our education service district, because there are dollars there. A lot of times, the school systems are oftentimes the first group of people that see a child that is in need. I remember as a teacher observing that myself. You could always tell the kid that was walking down the hallway who hadn't been fed, who hadn't had a trauma the night before, potentially was the victim of abuse, and a lot of times those red flags are caught in those systems as well. So my ask of you folks is to please expand your collaborative over and above the good work that you're doing now, because that way you can leverage the resources in a much more efficient way where everyone gets their service. So, thank you, and I'm glad you've been a part of a lot of these organizations from the beginning.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I really appreciate the testimony today, so thank you for coming, and I appreciate the written testimony that we received. If you did not provide written testimony to our clerk, and Melissa, I'm talking to you especially, I really want your statistics, would really appreciate receiving that. Very good information, so thank you so much.
So I'd like to add, thank you very much for the services you provide. The other thing is, we, you know, we're in the middle of looking at a courthouse, looks like the state funding's probably secure, and while that has an impact on our budget, I am totally supportive of children's levy, something, but if you expand it too big, then the ask is gonna be too much, and that's the challenge. But all you guys working together can come up with something that I would be totally in support of. But we haven't got an answer yet on the courthouse, so we don't wanna be competing with one another, 'cause the courthouse provides very important services too. And a lot of those people, should they get the services that they need, rather than going to jail, but, so, I'm total supporter of that discussion, and we'll be there when you need us. But the other thing I have to ask is, are budgets limited? Who do we cut? I mean, somebody would have to be cut, and most of your budgets that you've gotten in the past are in the budget, so I wouldn't worry about that. But at some point, somebody has to get cut, and it's very challenging to pick that group. I mean, we could, Sherry, you willing to give up some money?
We want more houses to sell so we have more money.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, and Ken.
Yeah, I've met with some of the representatives that are here today and delivered the same message. The needs are great and the resources are limited, clearly. I'll just say that I would be committed to supporting a children's levy. I think that that is the way to go, because the reality is, right now, the tax resources are limited. And I think if you are working together as a large group of multiple NGOs, that your voice will be very strong in terms of getting something like that passed. So just speaking for me personally, I'll be committed to helping you do that, and I'll leave it at that at this point. Thank you.
Yeah, and if Simon can get all those people at that luncheon, which was fantastic, and of course, the Clackamas Women's Services, Casa this Saturday, and all you other people, man, it should be an easy thing to pass. Let's hope. All right, Sherry.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. I just wanna give you an update on this current election. Election day is Tuesday, May 21st, and our ballot return so far is only 10%, which means that we mailed out 289,453 ballots, and we have received back 29,451.
Could you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
The numbers?
Yeah.
Okay, we mailed out 289,453, and as of today, our return is 29,451, 10%. It's very disappointing, but we are in line with two of our neighboring counties. Multnomah County so far has 8%, and Marion County has 10.9%. This is traditionally a smaller turnout election because people don't know the people on the ballot. These are small districts. As an example, a lot of the boards even have trouble getting people to file to run. We have a total of 220 candidates, which includes at least one candidate for each school board position and each fire district position, but there were 33 positions that were not filed for. And I actually had a call on that yesterday, and I suggested writing in. You can write in a candidate name on any of the races, but for the unfilled-for positions, that would be important.
How many names do they, how many times, how many people have to write in those names? Is there a minimum?
Well, whoever gets the most write-ins wins, but we have to send them a letter asking if they will take the position because they didn't file for it, so just because they're the one elected doesn't mean they want it.
Yeah, 'cause we could actually put people's names on there.
And some people do stage write-in campaigns. That's been done before, and they've won.
Yeah.
Okay, but today is the last day for people to mail their ballot in. After today, you need to find a drop box, and you can find the sites for those on Page 11 of the voter's pamphlet.
Or on the web.
Or on the web.
Right, it's on the web. I see that you have that up. Thank you. And the ballot must reach the elections office by 8 o'clock, the elections office or a drop site by 8 o'clock election night. And with not knowing candidates, you can look it up in the voter's pamphlet to read their statement, but if you still need more information, people can call our office, and we will give you the contact information for the candidate or the measure, and you can call them yourself. Is there any questions?
I voted. Paul.
Yay. You all voted, right?
Yeah, we did.
I always vote, last weekend, so I haven't voted yet, but I will be voting, as we always do, on the Sunday before the election, so.
And you can just walk the ballot over. That's easy.
That's right. And often, the libraries are actually a local place, you can do that, and in the voter's pamphlet is the addresses of the voting, places you can vote.
Yes, and one of the big changes after your approval of the new ballot drop boxes, they're all outside, so they all have the same hours. You don't have to think about what hours of the library open. All the boxes are outside, you can drop them 24/7 until 8 o'clock election night.
Yep. In my capacity as a county commissioner, this year, I've kinda been somewhat asked, and I've done a video for staff, in essentially basically a public service announcement to encourage people to either run for office and be involved. The special districts doesn't typically get this cycle, does not typically get the voter turnout as the general election, but it's important for people to be involved. Information about those people running for those offices is in those voter's pamphlets often, so you don't feel comfortable, but sometimes these are part of people that are responsible for your water bills or public safety and all the different things that are really important to, you know, the backbone of what our community provides. So I just wanna encourage people out there that are watching to, you know, take a look at it, open it up, and submit it, and vote. It's very important to vote. Sometimes these people become your leaders in higher offices as well, so it's important to make sure that, you know, if you can support someone that resonates, or their message resonates with you, it's important, so pay attention. Please vote.
Right.
Fisher.
I just wanna thank you for coming and giving us this update. You've done this consistently for every election now that I've been a part of, which I think, you know, I've been doing this for quite a while, over two years, and it's.
You're building tenure.
Right. But I so appreciate it, because I'm always, every time you come, I'm like, ah, it's just a good wake-up call in the middle of an election cycle to see the numbers, and I just deeply appreciate it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Ken.
I have to say, tenure does not count in politics. Only what the voters want counts.
But when you're in positions, voters can observe how you are, and they learn if they wanna vote for you, you know, next time. The other part that's kind of fun for us, we really like it when we have observers, and anyone can come and observe us all of our open hours, all of our processing time for an election, and you could start doing that today. We have our temps in today, and we'll be processing ballots most of the day, and then Monday afternoon and Tuesday afternoon and evening, we'll be processing ballots and doing all of the pieces. And most people, if they have complaints, they can come and observe, and they leave pretty happy with how things are done. They feel like it's pretty good. But thank you for your time, and thank you for voting.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, I wanna encourage people to do exactly what you've just suggested, which is to go in and watch the process. I've done that a couple of times, and it is confidence-building, I'll put it that way. I really encourage people to do that.
If you can stand the dust from the hanging chads.
We got rid of those 18 years ago. But we also have windows along the area for observers that observe every piece of what we do, so you can see all of it. Would you like to have the job that people can observe you every minute of your workday? We like it in elections.
Paul.
Yeah, just to build on what Commissioner Humberton had just mentioned, we do have a very transparent process in Clackamas County, our elections office, and the elections office is, and our clerk has been very open about inviting people in, and you can actually watch. I know there's, sometimes you watch the news somewhere in the country, there's controversy over how the votes are counted, and that it's somehow biased or jilted or whatnot, but, you know, we have great confidence in our system, and we do a great job, and people can actually watch the votes being counted on a bipartisan committee. So, and again, it's all videoed in camera to make sure that everyone is doing what they're supposed to do. So, thanks.
And you, as commissioners, give us everything we need to do it. Thank you.
Thanks. Chris and Les, come on up.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and commissioners. My name is Chris Hawes, I'm from Damascus. I wanna make clear I am not here in any official capacity, I'm just here as a citizen and a member of the Citizens Committee for Disincorporation. Most of you probably know, over the last four or five years, I've made a joking habit when Damascus has been mentioned, that I apologize and say, "I'm sorry." That's gonna end today. I find it not humorous anymore, and I don't think we did anything wrong. The first time we gathered signatures after, we got put in this position because of a decision Metro made and others, nobody asked us. We decided we didn't make a good decision in the first place, so we went and used the law, and we gathered signatures, and we tried to disincorporate the city. And then we were found or told that we had a voting standard, it's called an absolute majority, that we had to meet, that for the first and only time in the state of Oregon, that applied to us, and that was told to us by the Court of Appeals. They discovered that, and I've been told by my legal friends, if it's possible to have such a thing, that I'm the only person they're aware of that has been involved in a court of appeals case that successfully defended a scrivener's error. But the court also told us that the legislature could fix it, so we did what citizens, we thought were supposed to. We went to the legislature, and we got legislation passed with our legislators, and we went and held another election, and we voted. And now we've begin been told that we didn't vote right. So in contrast to what respectfully Commissioner Humberton said, we're kinda beginning to wonder if voters matter. Twice now, we've been told we voted, but not quite the way they wanted, or those rules, we don't like those rules, we're gonna do different, and I guess I'm supposed to go back if Damascus comes back alive, and I'm supposed to tell these people to vote again, and this time it'll count. Maybe? I'm not sure.
Should.
But tonight, some remnants of the Damascus Former City Council are supposedly going to gather and replace replacements or vacancies that I believe don't exist, showing as complete and utter a disregard for the voters and their fellow citizens I think could be imagined. I believe this action by them should disqualify them in any future of Damascus, and I will hold to that. I find, as we go along these days, that too often, our officialdom seems to not pay attention to what the people say. We vote yes, officialdom decides no is better. We say no, officialdom decides that yes might be more to their liking. We're told it's for the greater good, but I gotta tell you, in 60 trips around the sun, I have yet to see the greater good used to describe what the other guy wanted to do. So what I can say is that right now, I think, at least in Damascus and possibly other places, we're approaching a civic Rubicon, and I hope that we can all figure out a way to pull back before a whole lot of people have to go look up and find out what Ailea Iacta Est means and why. I gave my word to the people of Damascus that I would end this mess. I am three years and a heart attack from the last time I did it. As surprising as it might be, given my sunny disposition and gentle demeanor, this is the nice Chris. Nice Chris is going away. If I have to end Damascus again, it's not going to be pretty. I hope you can help me. The people of Damascus don't deserve this. It's disrespectful, what's been going on, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul.
Yeah, just for clarity, when I learned about this, Chris, the board took a position a couple Tuesdays ago to contact the state and let them know that this problem that the court determined as an error by the legislature is something that the state needs to fix. Nothing that the county can do, unfortunately, as you know, and I know you know that, we are just simply hoping that the state, and we conveyed that to them, that the state will take care of this problem. I do understand, as you know, now he's retired, but State Representative Kenimer and Senator Fagan were very active in that. I think she was state rep at the time.
Yes.
State Rep. Fagan at the time, and now Senator, so hopefully, they can work with the courts and the state and the governor to figure this out.
Yes, I can understand. I can't tell you how many times the last couple weeks I've been informed I'm just a private citizen.
I'd also like to add that the former mayor called me and suggested that we contact the former council for Damascus, had some good ideas on how to end this once and for all, and so I did let our staff know that Peter Watts has been thinking about this and warned that this might happen a long time ago, so hopefully, we are reaching out to Peter and Greg Chaimoff to get some ideas on how to. to Peter and Greg Chaimoff to get some ideas on how to resolve this once and for all.
I think you all have my contact information, so if there's anything you'd like to discuss, feel free to contact me. I am at this point keeping the people of Damascus away, but I can't say they're going to stay away for long.
Ken.
I'd just like to respond to one comment that you made. When you made the comment about being told you were just a citizen, in a democracy, a citizen is the highest position. So your vote does count and should count, and it doesn't make any difference whether we did or didn't agree with the incorporation or disincorporation of Damascus. What matters is that the majority of the citizens of that community voted to disincorporate. And that is the highest position, so.
Thank you.
Martha.
Yeah, and I also, as Chair Bernard has said, also had an opportunity to talk to your former mayor, Diana Helm, and the suggestion was that we talk to Mr. Watts. I have to admit, when I first got the notice that evidently they were illegally disincorporated, I thought, I just felt like, oh, it's kind of like zombies. It just comes back in it over and over and over again. And I think that all of us agree that we really would like to make sure that the citizens out there that voted to disincorporate in the majority, I mean, are heard. So I don't think you're going to get any pushback from this body. And I was there when it was incorporated as well, and we did have high hopes. And I always thought it was unfortunate, but I also believe in the will of the citizens to chart their own destiny. So thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you. Les.
Good morning. Les Poole, Damascus property owner. Lucky me. I don't live there, obviously, but I do have some bare land there. And while I'm not here to spend all my time talking about Damascus, I want to remind everyone of a point I made so many times I've forgotten it, and I think this gentleman will agree. Damascus was destined to fail because of promises made by Metro. This is on Metro, folks. And anyone that would like to come down and debate that with me, I certainly invite them. This is a big failure by Metro. Their management of the growth boundary through the years has been a fiasco, after time, after time, after time. And there's no grand bargain here on this one. Grand bargain is a term they use to describe trying to fix a giant mess and give it a pretty bow tie and put it all together and say, here, we fixed that. There's no grand bargain for this one. So it's very troubling to see how we got here. And the conversation is always about how are we going to address this? How are we going to end this? As Commissioner Schrader said, where does this zombie feeling end? And I ask you, where did this zombie feeling start? I have a couple quick comments. I've got about half my time left. Last week, I mentioned I spoke about HB 2020, the cap and trade bill, and went to Salem and told you I'd report back. One thing I can report back to you is that there are a lot of things going on at Salem that sure remind me of Damascus. That's one thing I can report. The other thing I can report to you is that HB 2020 has been amended, twisted, and contorted so many times, and there's so many insider deals, so many people looking for exemptions like what we saw with the Healthcare Act. Same thing. Well, I'll support this carbon tax if you'll let our organization or our company be exempt. Or maybe if the money comes our way from this tax, which is what it is, then, yeah, I'm good with it. It's not pretty. And I see nothing in the Clean Jobs Bill, as they call it, that's going to accomplish what we're being promised. It's just a mess down there. And I'm talking about Salem because what comes out of Salem is affecting us all. Right, sir? Amen. The last thing I want to mention is that repeatedly I've requested for support, an endorsement for evening meetings, and I appreciate some of the comments, especially from Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Schrader seemed positive about it. And I'd sure like to hear from the others as to what it would take and whether or not, yes or no, they support having one meeting a month in the evening instead of once a quarter or erratically. That's all about citizen involvement awareness. It's all about people being able to show up, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes, including collect signatures to make it happen. So let's make that happen, and if it doesn't, I'll just start coming in here with signatures, and at some point, that message will be clear, and we'll get it done. Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe? Calvert?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for hearing me, Commissioners. I would like to talk about the litter dilemma, that I will call it, on South End Road, a quarter-mile stretch from 909E up to the top of the hill. And we have spoken to the road department multiple times over the last couple of years, and I think what we get spoken to is strictly code, which I understand that, and that is that it's property owner responsibility. And we were told that if they had a crew, which they don't, they would require traffic control, which makes their involvement even more difficult. And I said, well, if we pick it up, we need traffic control. And he said, no, as a property owner, we only have to require traffic control for workers. So if anyone knows that stretch of South End Road, there's no shoulder on the road. It goes right into the ditch, and it's more than normal neighborhood litter. It looks like a Clackamas County dumping ground. It's horrible. And so we're caught in a catch-22. If we clean it up without traffic control, somebody's going to get hurt. There's been scores and scores of accidents on that road over the last 20 years. And so we need traffic control if we're going to do it. And what my question and my point is, is it seems like it would be common sense for the county to look at that small stretch of road and make a waiver so that they could come in for an hour, twice a year maybe, and just get that stuff cleaned up. And that's all I really have to say.
I'll drive by it today. I don't drive the South End Road very often, but it is one of the routes I could take home. So I'll drive by and take a look and see if I can. Thanks, Ken.
Doesn't the Sheriff's Department have a Weekend Warrior program with litter control pickup and whatnot like that? Because I've seen these crews out on the roads doing that.
Community Corrections does that.
Make a request there and see if we can get it done that way. That would be one option, certainly. I'd like to look into that if we could.
Paul?
I just wanted to say that the plight you have really is really be able to safely pick up that debris and not get killed or injured or anything like that. And that is a problem we're having all around the rural part of Clackamas County, and actually even in the urban areas, which I actually spoke about at the metro region this morning at the J-PAC meeting with regard to Highway 212 as it leaves the industrial area going into Damascus-Happy Valley area, which is all within the urban growth boundaries, all urbanized, but there's no facilities for kids to walk. There's a park across the highway they can't get to. We have people that are trapped, basically. They can't really walk. And a little short story is, a big, huge safety issue on Stafford Road. I went out with our road crew. We put on our safety vest, and we tried to walk across the road to go look at a troublesome corner. And none of us, we decided we weren't going to walk it, that we couldn't walk it. And this is our road crew and myself. And so it is dangerous out there, and it's a problem that's all around the county. So having the resources to do that is, if we do it for one area, it's going to be challenging. But Jim, myself, we'll drive by and see what you're facing. And it's something that we're trying to fight. I guess our rural roads, as people are being more encouraged to walk and ride bikes, it needs to be safe. And whether you're picking up garbage or, you know, on the side of the road in front of your property, that's, we understand, that's admirable. Thank you for doing that. And we'll figure out somehow, maybe there's a means of getting this done in a way that can happen in a safe way. So be careful out there.
All right. That's it for Citizen Communication. Didn't miss anybody, did I? Nope. We'll move on to, we have two public hearings. Gary?
First public hearing is a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 6.06 Park Rules of the Clackamas County Code. We have Rick Gruen from County Parks to present.
Morning, Rick. How are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Rick Gruen, County Parks Manager. We're here before you today to seek your approval to amend County Park Rules, Chapter 6.06. Each year, we review our ordinances and make recommendations for adjustments as necessary to ensure that our users of the parks are experiencing fair and equitable access to our parks as well as clean and safe parks. These proposed amendment change will allow us to continue to do so.
Okay. Any questions? I just quickly reminded myself by reading the ordinance. Anyway, with that, I will... So this isn't actually a public hearing.
Yeah, you're opening it. Bullet number two.
I need the right agenda in front of me. I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. See if you can hold the crowd back. No one's here, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to read the title by ordinance.
Sorry?
By title only.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It's a move to second that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay. This is going to be ordinance number 03-2019, and it's an ordinance amending Chapter 6.06 Park Rules of the Clackamas County Code and declaring an emergency.
Any further discussion? Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time?
Nope.
Seeing that, I'll announce that the second reading will be Thursday, June 6, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. The next item. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Next item, Gary?
Next, approval of a board order for a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the City of Wilsonville for a portion of Stafford Road, Market Road 12, County Road 1208. Rick Maxwell from Transportation and Development will present.
Couldn't we make them take all of Stafford?
Pardon me?
Make them take all of Stafford Road?
That would be great, wouldn't it? This is a whopping 820 feet we're talking about here.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rick Maxwell. I'm with the Engineering Division in the Department of Transportation and Development. Today, we have before you a resolution from the City of Wilsonville. They request the transfer of jurisdiction of a portion of Stafford, from the county, they request a transfer of jurisdiction from the county to the city of a portion of Stafford Road. This request has been thoroughly discussed by staff of both jurisdictions. Transferring jurisdiction of this portion of Stafford Road, which is currently in new development, will result in streamlined permitting process and construction standards consistent with the surrounding Wilsonville street system. A notice for today's action was published in the Wilsonville Statesman newspaper for four consecutive weeks, and this request is consistent with the county's policy and practice of partnering with our local jurisdictions to provide these necessary government services at the least cost to our citizens. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions? I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to speak on this matter. I'll wait a couple minutes, see if anyone wants to speak. Just kidding. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order for a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the City of Wilsonville for a portion of Stafford Road, Market Road 12, and County Road 1208.
Second.
They moved in second that we approve a board order for the transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the City of Wilsonville for a portion of Stafford Road, Market Road 12, Road, County Road 1208. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, Amendment Number Two, with Senior Citizen Council of Clackamas County to provide social services for Clackamas County residents; approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with the City of Sandy, Sandy Senior and Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents; approval of Amendment Number Two to a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for the Integrated Behavior Health Program, per member, per month, incentive program; approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah and Washington Counties for the Get Trained to Help Regional Collaboration; approval of a contract with Bateman Community Living to provide food services for older adults, community nutrition programs; under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a contract with David Evans and Associates for engineering and design improvements for the South End Road at Milepost 3.8 project; under Finance, approval of an amendment to the Assessor's CAFSA grant application for fiscal year 2019-20; under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes; under Business and Community Services, approval of a contract with Green Works for the master plan for Barton Park; under Department of Disaster Management, approval to apply for fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon; approval of a subrecipient grant agreement between the City of Portland and Clackamas County for purchase and reimbursement activities related to the use of the fiscal year 2018 U.S. Department of Homeland Security's Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program; approval of a grant application for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds, voluntary residential acquisition in the Canal Mitigation Zone of the Sandy River; under the Development Agency, granting a permanent right-of-way easement for road purposes and a permanent slope wall and public easement; and underwater environment services, approval of a contract with CH2M Hill Engineers for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility Willamette River Outfall. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Does any member wish to remove an item for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. You got that one.
I heard a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next up, County Administrator Updates.
Yes, Commissioners, good news to share with you. A milestone was reached in the solids handling capacity improvement project at our Tri-City facility. The new 1.4 million-gallon digester currently under construction passed a key water-holding test, which allows the project to move forward onto the next phase. The tank-like digester treats waste from homes and businesses. Completion of this project is expected in 2021. But it's right moving along. It's moving along, just as it should, on schedule. Commissioners, as you know, the county budget process is in full swing, and by the end of the day, on Monday, May 20, all budgets for every county department and special district will be posted online for the public to view. And then, beginning in two weeks, on Tuesday, May 28, are the Budget Committee hearings here at the county that will last approximately two weeks. And just way advance notice, on Thursday, May 30, will be a evening public session for the public to comment on the county budget. But just giving advance notice, the public may view our proposed budget starting next Monday, by the end of the day next Monday, May 20. A reminder to all of you, Commissioners and those watching, that the board will meet this evening as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors today, Thursday, May 16, at 6:00 p.m. at Concord School Property on Concord Road in Oak Grove, and everyone is welcome to attend. That is my report, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Next, Ken, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this week, attended the Fair Board Meeting where they are continuing to work on their master plan and are making progress. Attended a Rotary Meeting last week. It was Old Home Week, I guess you'd call that, for a lot of the old members that had been Rotary members in Oregon City Rotary for many, many years were welcomed back to the club for a luncheon. Well received by all. At AOC, we continue to negotiate on the Veterans Property Tax Exemption Bill. And it seems like the more people who put their oar in the water, the worse it gets. But we continue to work on it. Attended a housing forum. And of course, we have begun our budget deliberations to some degree with our last quarterly meeting the other day. And then, met with the Rivers of Life Group regarding a grant application that they had with the Tourism Department. And I think we've worked out some issues with them, including making sure that they understand there's processes and procedures that need to be followed in the appropriate manner. And finally, the Redland Grange will be having a Farmer's Market this Sunday. Encourage people to go out there to the Redland Grange and enjoy a nice Farmer's Market. And then, on that note, we will go to the dogs. This is Desi Lu, she is looking for her forever home. She's an Australian cattle dog mix. She's a girl that can be a little shy at first, but with a little patience, you'll see that she is a great snuggly friend. She loves going for walks. If you have a lap that could use some warming, she will be up for the job. She would really love living in a home that has a fenced yard so she can play in the yard when you are outside, and then head back inside for a snuggle on the couch. If you think that she would be a great fit for your lifestyle, come in and meet her today. For more information about Desi Lu or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Ms. Desi Lu.
Great, thank you, Ken. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know we all have had a busy week with all that's happening in Salem. We all go and do our part in many different ways. I had the wonderful opportunity of going and representing our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District on House Bill that was presented to allow a city to leave a county district. And it really gave a good opportunity to look at what our roles are as those that look out for the whole, whether it's the whole of the county or the whole of a district. We have to balance all of the needs of every resident within our larger group, which is something that is not so easy. And it's not so easy, especially when we have the competing interests of the different cities, and we have the different competing interests of the different constituencies and the different priorities. But it's really an honor and a privilege to be in these roles where we can juggle all these competing priorities. But when you talk about parks, and you think about all that we do, and you think about the kids that follow the rec mobile in the summer, or you think of what we do with Meals on Wheels, and I know that all of us have done our, our share of going out and volunteering to deliver meals. I know, for me in particular, I remember a woman named Gladys where we went to deliver the meal. She invited us in quite briefly, you don't spend a lot of time, but you spend some time, and she showed a picture of her whole family tree that was in her living room, and she went through it in a way to say, this is my family, this is my legacy, this is what I care about, and we got to share that moment. There are also examples of children that got their first bit of confidence through playing basketball or the different sporting activities. And it's important, these quality of life activities that we promote through our work through our Parks and Recreation District are really special. And so, as I look at the big picture of what we need to do as a Parks District, as a county, and as in our job, and working with our residents, we, we need to balance our resources and look at the whole. It's very, very important. So, we have these conversations, we do our advocacy, and we do the best that we can. And it's been quite a week, I must say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Paul.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, we had a retreat. However, we didn't have the opportunity to really talk about some of the big picture issues. And I'm suggesting, I got a question for Gary, our Administrator, with regard to setting our priorities for how we tackle some of the decisions we make. And I, I know the Administrator, in conversations with him recently, he's indicated that the budget proposed is flexible, would be flexible, and the Budget Committee can make adjustments based on our priorities. But I think it might be a good idea for us, I know that technically, the Budget Committee meeting we had on Wednesday was not part of the 2019-2020. You made that perfectly clear to delineate what we could talk about and not. So, but we need to have a talk about the 2019-2020 as soon as we can because of this tremendous unfortunate situation with the, with the budget and the forecasting being off significantly. So, is there any opportunity for us to actually have that dialogue amongst us, the county Commissioners, to talk about our priorities and how we can allow that to play out?
I will, so Andrew, I'm gonna give you a tip here, I'll need your help if you can. So, per Oregon budget law, there has to be advance notice given once the budget is published, which it will be on Monday, May 20. The question is, how much advance notice is required before deliberations can begin? Is it seven days or 24 hours? Certainly, we can make this part of the budget hearings that first day. When I present my budget message, we can have a conversation with the whole committee. But I think you may be suggesting maybe just the Commissioners have a conversation, which I guess as soonest would be next Tuesday perhaps, if Andrew can help me clarify the timeline.
And I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I can, after this is over, I can go find out and get back to the Commissioner.
Let me check on timelines. If possible, we could do it next week with the Commission, but also, and/or do it with the whole Budget Committee on the first day of the hearings on May 28.
So we have a strategy after this. I think we can sit and we'll talk about looking at the agenda, see where we can do that. But I don't think we have to do that with the budget. We can talk about.
Yeah, that was my point.
What our priorities are.
Actually, you're right. You can talk about your general funding priorities irrespective of this particular budget.
We'll get that on the schedule.
And that's why, that's really why we worded it, that way I worded it, that we actually talk about our priorities and then employ that or convey that when the Budget Committee process actually technically begins. And I do understand Oregon budget law and the technicalities of that. So I appreciate you keeping a sharp eye on, focus on that, that we do things legitimately. I do have, you know, the concerns of the past has been that if our Budget Committee does not have those priorities, understand our direction, because we're such a large group, five county Commissioners and five citizens, that we often get bogged down in line item stuff and not really look at the big picture. And we need to step back from a big picture standpoint and realize what we're grappling with. And we also need to realize that when each of us speaks at the Budget Committee Meeting, that we're taken seriously, our concerns are taken seriously. And I think that there's been a pattern somewhat, that those things get drowned out, and that people want to just move on because they get tired or exhausted, whatever it may be. But there were some key points that have been made last year that were not taken seriously, and some key points that we're making in years prior that have not been taken seriously. I met last Thursday with our auditor. I met with another auditing firm this morning to talk about our processes. And I think that I'd like to have a discussion about our audit process. And I've learned quite a bit that maybe our colleagues don't realize, but I think we have to make some revisions in how we do that. The delta between, frankly, the delta between the forecast of where we were, and we talked about on, on Wednesday morning, the delta that has been about, which forecast you want to look at, between a $30 and $60 million delta, and we're negative. And that's, that's, that's pretty serious, it's pretty serious times. And we are trying to serve the people that we, that we talked about, our constituents. And having the resources to do that is terribly important, and it's unfortunate that we're in this predicament. But I'm gonna go back to that, I think there is value in having people with tenure, and people on the Budget Committee, or on other committees, and people with institutional knowledge. And I was very disappointed that we couldn't bring at least one of those people back on the Budget Committee. But I think the advice that has been given has been important. So hopefully, we can get there, and I'll, I'll hopefully have a request for a meeting on, on the audit structure, which apparently he's got, I think the firm's doing fine, and our staff are doing fine. There's a structure that is not transparent enough. And unfortunately, communications and details do not get conveyed to the Board of County Commissioners, who are ultimately responsible. Thank you.
Martha.
Well, it's been a busy week here today. Started out with national meetings, with the National Association of Counties. Our Community and Economic Development Committee met, preparing our platforms for what is going to be a national meeting in Clark County, Nevada. I was a part of that conversation. At the Association of Oregon Counties this past Monday, I'm the president this year, we had good legislative discussions, but a lot of the action was at the board meeting where we did decide to go out for a regional search for a new executive director. It was a very lively conversation because this is kind of a new thing for the organization as we move forward to professionalize our internal processes. We have a very strong internal candidate for that position. And I know that there are a number of people, including myself, that are encouraging him to apply for the job. But having this as a search will certainly legitimize whoever is selected to be our next executive director of our statewide association. The Western Interstate Region Meeting is going on today as well. That is a coalition of all the counties in the western states. I have been unable to attend because we started our budget process, and I felt that it was very necessary for me to be here with that discussion. But they are doing good things in Spokane, Washington, as we speak today. I attended the family kickoff with Commissioner, with my friend, Commissioner Fisher, the other day. I got to do the ready, set, go for the kids' run. Some of the little guys got enthusiastic and joined the older kids, and that was kind of fun to see. It was a lot of balloons, a lot of fun, a lot of parents. Certainly brought back my old days of being a mom with kids that age. I also had an opportunity this week to meet with President Lynn O'Neill of the Friends of Timberline. Timberline is one of our national treasures. We talked about the, the future of their organization, how they work with their endowments, how they do their fundraising, because they do have a Friends Group that actually helps to raise money to maintain the lodge that is a national trust property. And it's one of our key attractions for tourism and is considered one of the best ski areas in the country because you can ski all summer long up on the upper areas of the glacier at Timberline. The other piece of this, which I think is funny, I'm gonna do a little bit of show and tell here today because.
I was gonna ask what that was.
This, I don't know if my colleagues know what this is.
The bee box.
This is a bee box from Sawdusters and made in the Pacific Northwest. You can get these actually at the Oregon City Farmer's Market. There's a really lovely man, he's got a big white beard, he's a great guy, and he actually makes bee boxes. And most of you know I'm an entomologist by training. And this is kind of unique because in the spring, I'm opening this up, you can actually buy the little, the pollinating bees, the little pupa, and you can get them at any kind of farm store or backyard yard store. And you put them in here, and there's a little hole. So when they emerge, they actually are able to readily access, if I can open it up.
Do the bees have to?
Their home. They actually go into these little, these little holes, they lay their eggs, and they turn into larvae, but they're all plugged up with little pieces of mud. I have one box at home already that's already got the bees ready. It's a little late to put it out this year, they, they're early spring bees. It's best to put these out at the beginning of March. Buy the pupa, put them in here, and then you'll have stingless. Remember, these are wild bees. They don't have stingers, they're, they're in the Orner Megatillidae, and they're little, little carpenter bees, and they will improve the amount of fruit you have on your fruit trees, whether it be peaches, or cherries, or apples. I also visited the northwest, our experiment station the other day, and talked to their entomologist, and he confirmed with me that the fruit set, that the fruit trees that they are working with there, it's been fantastic this year because they had these bees available on the property. Remember, folks, here's our science, science teaching for the day. It's not just honeybees. We have a lot of native pollinators that we can help succeed and help with pollination to have a good, a good fruit set and to have a good food shed. And pollinators also include flies, butterflies, moths, and also, no, stink bugs. Stink bugs are a huge pest right now, and they're doing integrated pest management. Don't get me going in another instance. That's a whole other subject, that integrated pest.
You guys are bugging me out.
So this Saturday, when you go to Oregon City, there's a pollinator fair at the Farmer's Market. So take a look at that, it's with our Masters Gardeners, and buy a bee box, you'll be glad you did. Okay, and with that, Commissioner, I'm not gonna say anymore, but I would like to maybe give the Chair the word of the week and the Art Director to kind of start out.
All right. Okay. All right, it's my turn? So I was just looking at my calendar, Les' request for a night meeting, and just about every night, I'm at a night meeting. And, and we're actually all over the county at night meetings. We'll, we'll talk about it again, but our attendance was so poor at those meetings that it's, I think it's just as valuable to be out at a Grange meeting, up at Government Camp, or Beaver Creek, all over where they, we go to them. And I'd be more interested in a meeting like this that was in their community rather than here, and forcing them to come here. And we could do that quarterly, like tonight, we have a meeting on the parks, which will be in Oak Grove. So we've been spending a lot of time in Salem, trying to work with Happy Valley for a resolution of Parks District. And so, we've been spending a lot of time on that. I'm gonna ask the Board to support perhaps a measure. I don't have the number right now, I left the note in my car, so I'll be talking about putting that on a discussion, to discuss. I also went to T2020, and I think we have a problem. There was a large contingent, and, and I, and, you know, I think Mayor Gamba's absolutely right. We have 11 years to deal with global warming. But Clackamas County is not like Portland. We don't have the population or the roads. We have a lot more roads than they do, but we're much more diverse. And if I live outside of Damascus or Happy Valley, I don't have the transit options. In some cases, you can't walk, ride your bike, or anything out there without risking your life. But there was a large contingent there who specifically went after 212, which is the sunrise phase two. And there is a huge jobs housing opportunity out there. We need to be more organized, or that may end up off the list. And frankly, if that's off the list, I may be off the committee. But we need to really step up and make sure we have a good story to tell. It's rated one of the top, top ones, top 10, top 15, something, but people were complaining, why is it on the list? No more new roads, which is, I suppose, fine when you live in Portland, but it's not okay in Clackamas County. I was happy to see that McLaughlin and 82nd Avenue were still on there. But there's an opportunity to, and there's a slide up on the screen, a website to fill out a survey, and participate in the task force discussion by answering some questions on the survey. The goal, and we agree with it, is to take a bold step to address severe congestion we all experience in the region. By the way, congestion is not a top priority for a lot of those folks. It is for us, 205. You know, Paul and I. 205, you know, Paul and I, by the way, were both in the automotive industry, and a car at idle pollutes a lot more than a car driving down the freeway. I can tell you that for certain. Having driven cars with a meter on them, they pollute a lot more. So congestion is and should be a priority. As part of the effort to engage the public in their development of transportation funding measures, Metro staff has created an online survey to know more about what people experience on key regional corridors and get feedback about the kinds of region-wide investments that matter most to people and their communities. So unless you want Portland to fill out the survey and drive the discussion, make sure you log on and fill out the survey. You can take the survey by going to Metro website, just Google Metro T2020 survey. We've also posted a survey on the county's Facebook page and Twitter page, and we'll be sending out with Nextdoor soon, which is also a-
Nextdoor is what? Social media site.
Social media. The survey will be open through June 30th and is available in English and soon in Spanish. Spanish. I encourage you to take the time to fill out the survey. And also, while we're at it, take the time to fill out the one that you're voting and turn that in. We do have elections is right over here. Takes you a minute to drive by and drop it in there. And I'd say that I didn't know a lot of those people either, but I did read the voter's pamphlet and make my selection. I don't think I've missed an election since 19... When was Nixon's? I wasn't old enough when Nixon ran the last time.
1917?
1917. See, it was 1990 was when I became 21.
It was 1917 for him, I'm in real trouble.
Well, I wasn't old enough to vote in 72. I was still 21, wasn't I, or 18?
I was 18, I think. He just changed it to 18.
Yeah. Anyway, pollinate.
72 was Nixon's reelection.
Yes. And I was not old enough to vote.
I was. I remember it well.
Pollinate.
We can blame Ken.
Well, half the time I even know what day it is, so I have to look at my calendar.
It's Thursday, but it might be Friday before we get out of here.
I'm out of time to meet.
To carry out the pollination of, to mark or smudge with pollen. Do you know that pollinate was first used in the late 1870s? You should remember that, Paul, Ken.
Here we go again.
Many plants and flowers are pollinated by bees. One of our core values is to honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. Arts and culture activities in the county. City of Malala meeting on Formation of Cultural, Culture, History, and Arts Commission, misspelled, Saturday, May 18th, 1:00 to 2:30, Malala Library. The City of Malala is exploring the formation of a commission focused on culture, history, and art. If you live or work in the Malala area, and I'm sure you can go there even if you don't, and have passion for arts and building, a sense of community, we'd love to have your support. Lake Oswego Library, 3rd, 3rd, Tuesday, Author Series, Tuesday, May 21st, 7:00 to 8:00, based on his latest book, Unique Eats and Eaterys of Portland, Oregon, author Adam Sayer. One hour presentation detailing the history of current culinary landscape through the stories of the people, place, and events that helped make it and are currently making it happen. So with that, yes?
Can I add one thing, just to build on what you said?
Sure.
On, on the transportation. Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I learned this morning of what took place last night at Metro. And, you know, what we've got here is we have the haves and the have-nots. And the people that have this great grid structure in Portland, they got transit everywhere, they got great service, they got sidewalk, they have, they have areas that they need improvement, and we recognize that. But they have a lot. We have areas where there's no transit, where there's no, there's nothing. And it's, it's a new day, I guess, when the areas that have a lot want to undermine a project where we have very little for the benefit of the, of perhaps whatever their agenda may be. I don't know what it is, I'm gonna find out. But I don't ever recall ever going out of town or out of our area and trying to undermine anyone's project or region or what their effort is. We can advocate for our own, that's what we ought to do, but you know, we gotta realize. So that, that slide that was up when Commissioner Bernard was talking about Get Connected, they've got a great force, a great advocacy group that continually out there advocates and puts in input. Our citizens need to get involved and realize if we want to reduce congestion in our area, we want to be involved, we're gonna have to be far more involved because we're facing an organization, organizations that advocate for their town or their area and not really being sensitive to the needs of others who don't even have anywhere near as much. So we have major inequities, and hence, we are calling ourselves one of the transit deserts in the region. And we just keep, please, your input and involvement in transportation is more important than ever. Thank you.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna piggyback on that a little bit. Most relationships, one way or another, tend to have some degree of transactional aspects to those relationships. What that generally means, contractually speaking, is you get something and I get something. I think the T2020 bond is an important bond, but it's not gonna pass in Clackamas County if there is not something for Clackamas County that benefits the suburban nature of this county. We have 16 cities. We're not a single county with one giant city. And so if whoever is listening to this is interested in seeing that bond passed, I don't see that happening in Clackamas County without support for the kinds of projects that unfortunately were spoken against last night, and I'll leave it at that.
With that, thank you, and we're adjourned.
Were you there the last slide?